Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Franklin Planet Board November 3rd, 2025 meeting. This meeting is audio and video recorded as well as on Zoom. And the Zoom caller number is 312-626-6799 with a meeting number 835-281-25740. Take care of some general business as our first items of business. So our first one would be a decision for Forge Park Lot 2. If I could go to Amy, please, Department of Planning, for a quick review, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the public hearing was closed on October 20, 2025. They requested three waivers, which I listed in my letter. I know the one outstanding item was retaining wall drawings, which they have submitted.
Good. Go to the rest of the board. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Anyone who want to make a motion on the approval of Lot 2 Forge Parkway?
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve. Second, on favor?
Aye.
With the conditions, waivers, excuse me?
With waivers.
Yeah, with the waivers, three waivers, 1 through 3, and the retaining walls submitted for record. Do I hear a second? On favor for?
Here to vote.
Yep. Aye.
On favor?
On favor.
Aye.
What's going on?
Okay, our next item of business, this would be for a decision for 380 King Street. If I could go to Amy again, Department of Planning?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this was closed on October 20th, 2025. There's two waivers that have been requested. The parking space is to allow one less space and the HDPE piping 12-inch minimum cover. Suggested conditions for the plan of course decision will be three affordable units, which is required under inclusionary zoning by law. The applicant will work with DPW on the turning lanes on King Street. There was talk about changing up the left lane, and the applicant will work with DPW for the sewer connection and installation of the sewer on site.
Good, thank you, Amy. So.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the following waivers. 185-21B 3A1 parking spaces to allow 59 spaces where 60 are required, and number 2, 311B 2A stormwater to allow HDPE piping 12-inch minimum cover. Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve 380 King Street site plan with the following special conditions. There will be three affordable units provided. The applicant will work with DPW on turning lanes for King Street, and the applicant will work with DPW for sewer connection installation.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item of business, this would be for a final formage for 157 Cottage Street. If I could go to Amy at the bottom of the line, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is 157 Cottage Street was approved back on June 2nd, 2025, mainly the site work and some drainage in the parking area at the site. They've already received the partial formage, and they're here for a final formage. Beta has been out to the site and has provided the review. I will note that Beta is on Zoom if there's any questions that you have to address with them.
Okay, good. I'd just go to Mike at DPW. Mike, are you happy with what everything was done up there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we had no other comments. They had some individual permits, but it worked within the right of way, and we were holding bonds on that until we closed that off. But as far as we're conservative site, or whatever, unless Beta had any other comments, we're satisfied.
Okay, good, thank you. Matt?
It's actually Steve Lee that's online.
Steve, you out there?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm here. We don't have any other comments.
So you're all good and good. Okay. So make a motion to approve 157 Cottage Street for a final formage. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, next item of business, this would be for a discussion update for 275 Washington Street. If I could go to Amy, please, Department of Planning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant owner wanted to come in and kind of give an update on the field changes. So currently, this is permitted for three industrial buildings. Two have been built. They're starting to move towards the third one to be built. There were a few field changes they wanted to discuss. Beta's been out there and has, I believe, should have sent a letter, but it's mainly about moving the propane tank, about changing the size of the propane tank. The applicant's here that could address any questions.
Okay, good, thank you. Did Steve look at this one or Matt?
Matt, whatever, I believe. But Steve's here to, Steve, you're here to represent him though, right?
Yes. Yeah, I, so I was informed of this project earlier by Matt Crowley. He kind of gave me a rundown of what had been going on as far as the, like, the propane tank for the first existing building. They put it at the end of the parking area. My understanding is that they did a small, like, study, parking study, to see if this would affect the required amount they need for parking, and that it was found that it would be fine if the two, I believe those two spaces would be rendered not usable because of it. So the propane tank for building one is all set in our eyes. The second was between buildings two and three, and my understanding of that is the requirements for the location of that were that it needs to be 25 feet. It was placed 25 feet away from the existing building number two and the proposed building number three, and that the proposed waste receptacle area would need to be 10 feet off of the propane tank pad to meet fire code. And we're fine with everything that we're seeing on the plans as far as that goes.
Okay, good, thank you. Does anybody have any questions from the board?
Chairman, I have one. I don't necessarily have any issues with what's being presented for the relocation of the propane tank, and it looks like the fire department, as well as Beta, are on board with the request. I do have a question that's kind of aside from the request here for the change, is since the applicant is here, are we still having issues with trucks and things in this location and complaints from the neighbors on a regular basis that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of any right now.
All right.
I have not received any. Normally, the building commissioner would copy me if he did receive any.
So I do remember seeing some emails from an abbotter saying that they regularly have large trucks that aren't supposed to be utilizing the area.
Right. I think you can address that. I think the problem was the sign wasn't shown the right way, which hopefully has been fixed.
It's been resolved. Great. Okay, then I'm all set.
Jay?
No, I get out there.
Chris?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just have one quick question. You're eliminating two tanks, but you're putting one larger tank in? Is that my understanding?
Well, we originally had two tanks.
If you just want to, you can approach the mic and introduce yourself for the record, please.
Sure. Peter Jenta, part of the management team for Franklin Flex Space. So I think we originally had two tanks located together, and the fire department and the propane company suggested that we needed to have the second tank located further to the third building to get pressure. So rather than have two tanks together, we have one tank currently located by building one, and we're proposing the second tank to be placed between buildings two and three.
Oh, so you're just splitting them up?
We're just splitting them up. And we say for fire reasons, that's a better setup.
I just want to clarify, let me call myself. Okay, oh, good, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody in the audience have any comments, questions? So I make a motion to approve the field change for 275 Washington Street per the fire department's letter as well. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You also, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last item of general business, this would be a condition for our approval of meeting minutes from October 6th and October 20th, 2025. Does anybody have any additions or deletions? If you want to make a motion to approve meeting minutes from October 6th and October 20th, do you hear a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item of business, this would be for 3, excuse me, 543 Union Street, Aiden Estates, definitive subdivision. If I could go to Amy, please, Department of Planning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just, I want to note the applicant has provided extension until November 17th, 2025. Had the plan board had requested Beta to review the environmental study, they did do a basic review of it. It is included in their letter that they really don't have any further comments. If it goes any deeper, they don't, it's not an agricultural specialist that they have on board, but they have looked at it and didn't see any issues with it. Plan of board requested screening to the adjacent blueberry bushes, so the applicant has provided a fence in the rear of lots two and three. The Board of Health has acknowledged they will be permitting any well installations as required. And then just to note that there is one requested waiver to allow one sidewalk where two are required. Thank you.
There's actually a few more on the cover sheet. We can go over our presentation.
Okay.
There were ones that Beta recommended. We did last.
At the last minute. Okay.
Before I go to the board and audience, could you just introduce yourself to the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. of the Board, Richard Cornetta, attorney for the applicant, joined by Mike Assett of Gary &amp; Howman, our consulting engineer on the project.
Before I go to the board, maybe you guys can turn around and give us a brief review of all the comments that you've addressed from Beta's last series go-around. I know there's a substantial amount that you addressed. I just see if you can give us a brief overview.
Sure. I'll just kind of go down the list. Stavi, if you want to discuss anything, please. Comment 15, they requested that we identify the tangent length of all curves. That information has been added to Sheet 2. Comment I6, they requested, let's see, they wanted the location names and width of the adjacent street should be identified. They asked we provide the information for Delta Drive. That information has been added to Sheet 2. The comment 21 was in relation to the alignment with Delta Drive and that slight offset that we've discussed at previous hearings. They acknowledged that the town engineer has recommended to the board that alignment be allowed to remain with that slight offset, noting that it has that beneficial offset versus the dangerous offset. And that's one of the waivers, and so that waiver has been added to the cover sheet. That's one of the waivers that was not mentioned earlier. Comment 24 is another request for a waiver that is for allowing Class 5 RCP to allow for pipe cover less than 42 inches. That waiver is also shown on the cover sheet. Comment 27 was in relation to providing revisions to our water main details. We addressed that comment by noting that the water main is no longer proposed, and the site is proposed to be serviced by private wells, and so those details have been removed, and so that comment is no longer applicable. Comment 28 is in relation to that removal of that water line and some cleanup that needed to be addressed on there. So one of the requirements of the subdivision by law is that adequate water supplies are available for fire safety through reserved access to, in existing or created fire pond, dry hydrants, piped to a pond, or other means determined following consultation with the fire department. And I'm going to stop at that section. So our response was the applicant is coordinating with the Franklin DPW and Franklin Fire Department to resolve this issue. We understand that due to the board's upcoming schedule, they may wish to close the public hearing at tonight's meeting. The applicant would be happy to accept a condition of approval requiring this issue be resolved to the satisfaction of the DPW and Franklin Fire Department prior to start of construction. And then part B of that comment, I guess, is the water supplies for domestic use are likely, we have to demonstrate that what the water supplies for domestic use are likely to be able to meet Board of Health regulations for yield and quality. To that end, we've provided the Board of Health with well testing that we did on an existing irrigation well on the property, showing that it had a yield of over, I believe, 30 gallons per minute. And it had a test noted no pollutants per EPA standards, demonstrating that the existing groundwater is of adequate supply and capacity on the site, and noted that, obviously, that this is not an approval of all wells to be installed. It still needs to go through the Board of Health process, but we believe it meets the requirement that it is likely to be able to meet Board of Health regulations for yield and quality. And then the part C of that comment is that when you're proposing a subdivision with private water supply, we need to demonstrate that connection to the public water supply is infeasible. So we documented that we've been having discussions with the Franklin DPW and Water Department divisions, discussing the feasibility of the development of town water. The existing water main in Union Street out in front of the property is a six-inch cast iron water main. Through our discussions with Mike and Brutus, it was determined that that was inadequate for connection to a new water main to provide for our project. And so in order for us to connect there, we would have to install over 300 feet of new 12-inch main from Loretta Road to Delta Drive. And the cost of this public infrastructure cannot be borne by the applicant for such a relatively small development, and there are no alternative connection locations possible. We looked at the abutting streets and even some possibility of private access through other, other private lots, and, you know, there just isn't anything that we could find. In addition, the site is not shown on the Franklin Water System map, and so an amendment would need to be granted by the Town Council before we could even do that. So for all those reasons, we believe that the connection to the public water supply is infeasible. Comment 11, sorry, 210 is relation to the sewer trench detail. We've revised that to meet the requirements noted, and also added a note that the sewer installations shall meet the Franklin DPW standard documents for sewer materials and installation. So just kind of a coverall that, you know, if there were any conflicts on the plan, that the Franklin DPW's standards were controlled. General comments, this is the, I think, the last additional waiver that was requested. We show flared end sections for some of our discharges and surface water connections to our drainage system. The, the bylaw requires winged head walls, and so that's the waiver we're requesting for that. There is a technical revision to the HydroCAD stormwater model. We made that revision, and it shows that the, the outlet from the basin will not constrict the flow and cause any problems with the model. Okay, now we are on to G7. We've shown a six-inch low-level outlet control. It shows a gated outlet that's closed during normal operation, that's as they requested. Comment G8, in the existing conditions analysis, they wanted us to, we had used a generic model for some of the off-site flow coming onto the site. We did not have an accurate survey through there. They suggested we use aerial imagery to document that as opposed to the generic model. We've done that, and the pond works as designed. There were no changes needed as a result of that adjustment. G10, and so that's related to the catch basin at the site entrance. They requested some clarification on the treatment train, and some clearer labeling for the water quality unit that's proposed at the site entrance. And they asked that we revise the standard for narrative and include calculations confirming that it can provide the required treatment pollutant, required pollutant removal rates and meet the required water quality flow rate. We've provided that calculation in the revised stormwater report that was submitted on last Wednesday. And they also said Beta defers to the town of whether the Franklin DPW is willing to maintain the water quality structure. Comment G12 is a minor revision to the stormwater checklist, requesting that we uncheck a box, you know, indicating that the low-impact development measures utilized include country drainage. If you note earlier in the process, we had that instead of a catch basin at the site entrance, we had that low flow that would flow into a swale. That was removed as a request of Beta, but that checkbox wasn't revised. We, we've updated that. And then G13, provide a plan showing the incremental areas contributing to each catch basin. So we provided a catch basin watershed plan, technical plan for them to review. And then they asked for, and G14, provide the horizontal centerline radius of the curve on the lot plan. We provided that on Sheet 2. And then G15 is in relation to the, the ownership transfer to the town once the vote is publicly accepted. So we've clarified the long-term operation and maintenance plan to indicate that the current owner of the property, Calory's Properties, will be responsible for the maintenance of the stormwater system up to and until public road acceptance. At that time, ownership and maintenance of the system will pass to the town of Franklin, and that's revised in the stormwater report. And so in brief, that's kind of, you know, ripping through the comment letter, and, you know, that's everything.
Well, good, thank you. I knew you guys took care of a lot of the loose ends. Before I go to the board, I'll go to Mike at DPW. Are you comfortable with everything and all the responses?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we didn't have any, I did have one comment. I was looking through the plans today. There was one thing on there I just wanted to point out. It was on the detail for the street lighting. Looked like it was a decorative style street light. With this, it would eventually become a town roadway. We just prefer to see the standard streetlights like we normally have everywhere else. It's like it's spelled out in there, or in some of the regulations, 25-foot aluminum pole type now. So as opposed to decorative, something special, we'd have to make data out of it. That's it, though.
Yeah, and we'd be happy, as a condition of approval, if the board so chooses to coordinate with DPW to meet, make sure the lighting beats their standards.
Okay, good, thank you. That's it. Thanks, Mike. Steve, you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Steve, if you want to give us a brief overview. I know they took care of a lot of the loose ends. Are you comfortable with what you've seen in response?
Yes, the, the summation of our comments by the applicant right there was pretty thorough. It appears that all of the, that they addressed all of our comments. The comment 2.8 regarding the water service, as long as there, the, the plans have been reviewed by the, by a department regarding if there's ample water pressure in the wells, or however they're going to be doing fire protection, that was one of the comments I had highlighted. And he addressed, it's, it's a pretty hardy comment, and they addressed, and he answered basically all of them. There's just a little note on there that says the proposed design should be reviewed by the fire department now that the water main isn't tying into the street. But otherwise, they have addressed all of the, all of the comments. We haven't, I haven't received the actual response letter, but those comments that he just provided now would be sufficient for us, you know. So we're all good on our end.
Okay, good, thank you. Before I go to the audience.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Before I go to the audience, I'll go to the board. Jen, who with you? Question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm still unclear in terms of the environmental impact review, what the impact is to the adjacent agricultural operation. I know that Beta mentioned that the responses to the applicant's consultant's environmental analysis was generally satisfactory. However, I have not seen, unless I've just missed it somewhere, further review by a professional that has agricultural expertise. And so I'm just wondering if I missed that somewhere. Chair, did you?
No, the, the review that we summarized at the last meeting is, is what we've provided to date. We feel that meets the requirements of the Franklin subdivision by law, which is what Beta was speaking to when they mentioned their general satisfaction with the responses.
I guess, I, okay. Could you just indicate for that environmental review that you guys have done, that Beta has reviewed? So is your environmental consultant has provided the information, basically saying that the impact to the agricultural use is non-existent? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah. It's, you know, the use we're proposing is consistent with the surrounding area. There are sufficient best management practices going to propose to be implemented to, you know, control pollutant introduction. to, you know, control pollutant um introduction through our development. And um, yeah, there's no, there's no impacts anticipated.
And then Beta has subsequently indicated that they agree with that review.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak for, I don't want to speak for Beta, but they, they reviewed that letter and found it to be satisfactory based on their, on their comment.
Thank you. I don't have anything further.
Jay? I'm not a farming expert, but I do know a little bit about groundwater. Uh, so I've been actually reading the well reports for like this whole area. And I could tell you what that whole aquifer looks like if you really want me to bore you to death. Um, it's surprisingly high yield. It's like really high yield. Um, and it's really deep. Furthermore, the farm would remain uphill of hydraulic gradient of anything that's installed downhill. So absent any other information regarding agricultural impacts, I'm just looking at it from what I have some knowledge of and understand. And I can't really draw a line, at least for the wells, between how it would impact the farm, especially considering adjacent to this is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 other active wells. So I can't comment as to the rest of it, but as to that part of the environmental impact, I did do a fair amount of homework. I'm not overly concerned with the wells. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, but I can speak to the capacity. We did do a well test on the irrigation well on our property, and like I said, it was, it was very high yield.
Yeah, I mean, these things are showing like 35 gallons per minute, 40 gallons per minute. It's like screaming.
Yeah, the, the one we did on the irrigation well, which has remained inactive for about three years, was about 30 gallons per minute.
Yeah, and that's one undeveloped well. If you developed it, probably faster.
Yeah.
Yep, no, so I'm, I'm not really worried about that. But all the rest of it, I have no knowledge coming on, so.
Oh, and just to speak on a comment from Jay earlier, we did remove that tree that you didn't like and replaced it.
Um, thank you. Do you still have a favor? No, I mean, I'm surprised that the, you know, the, the Brad prepare was even listed in the tree list because it's like regarded as like any tree wardens worst nightmare. They just snap and they have shallow roots and they're hybrid base themselves.
Yeah, that, that one's been removed.
Get him in, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd also like to add, during previous meetings, we had heard from the neighbor, uh, the farm, and the concerns that were expressed at a couple of the meetings really surrounded the issues of trespass and safety, attractive nuisance. And so in review of that, we have provided, as, as Mike indicated, a six-foot uh screenage fence along the southern boundary of the property along with a line of arborvitae. So we should address that concern of the neighbor that people would just go and go, go after the, the agricultural products. Or when they were, during those sensitive times where they were spraying, I believe that the fence uh and the, the natural screening that we're providing would, would address those, those concerns.
Good, thank you.
Through, through the chair, sorry. Um, just a point to clarify for that. Why is the fence not continuing along the lot 1?
There is an existing uh tree area in that area, and I think that was what was requested at previous hearings, was that it, it extend along the lot 2 and lot 3 boundaries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, do have a question too. I appreciate the addition of the fence there to try and ease some of these, uh, and some of the concerns. Is there any reason why the arborvitae are only on lot 3 and not lot 2 and 3? What was the decision there and why?
Uh, so lot 3 is actually planned to be the owner occupied lot. Um, and so he was, you know, willing to commit on that because he knows he's going to be able to, um, you know, he's willing to do it. He didn't want to commit the lot to, uh, future owner to that screening. You know, the previous request of the board was just the fence. And so, you know, the arborvitae are kind of a bonus screening on, on the lot that he's willing to do. That's not to say that the lot 2 owner won't decide to do something similar when they, when they take possession of the lot. Um, he just didn't want to end up committing to that before he, you know, he knew who that owner would be and their preferences.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, no, all my, all my concerns have been addressed.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, I guess I'll go to the audience. Uh, if anybody has any questions or comments, I'll just approach the mic, please, and give your name and address if so. I think if you guys did a good job cleaning up the lot since the last meeting, the lot got done, um, I think everybody should be satisfied with the fence, the trees and anything else. If no one has any, if you just want to approach the mic, please. Either one, yeah.
I have a question. My name is Mara Murphy. I live at 6 Rachel Circle in Franklin. Um, I looked at some of the prior um meetings and I thought you had requested an agricultural analysis. Is that incorrect or is that correct?
So I, I believe the request in general was to provide that environmental study, and we did provide one that met the um subdivision bylaw requirements, um, as determined by Beta. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but um, I think the, the comment before was a request from Jennifer to potentially see if Beta had agricultural expertise on staff. Um, and um, I think that's as far as I can answer that question.
So Beta is paid for by them? Is that correct?
Beta's an independent reviewer that the town has selected as the reviewer for all planning board plans, and the applicant is required to fund that payment. The town does not pay for it.
Okay, and so.
From anybody, it's an unbiased review of plans and submittals.
Okay, and so because there's a farm and it's an agricultural farm, which is a great resource to our town, um, you don't think it's important to do the agricultural analysis because these people don't have someone on staff? Is that correct?
No, actually, what was requested is exactly what Matt had said. I had actually asked for an environmental review based upon the subdivision rules and regulations which they provided. And our independent reviewer has responded saying that they have met the requirements of our subdivision regulations. So I think that, um, in reading what the applicant has provided and has been reviewed by our private independent reviewer, I'm satisfied that they have answered the questions related to any impacts that will happen on the adjacent farm.
Okay, and do everyone, does everyone on Union Street now have groundwater for their um drinking water?
No, so whoever, whatever your service is on Union Street remains your service. If you're plugged into town water, you have town water. If you have a well, you have a well. Uh, there's a mixture of both on Union Street according to this plan.
Okay.
So that remains as such, and uh, as the kind of boring conversation about geohydrology was going between Mike and I, um, the well capacity over there is such that you would get one gallon approximately every second and a half.
Right, but there's.
So it's like screaming fast.
Okay, sorry, there's no concern about like pesticides in the groundwater?
Uh, no, I'm not worried about it.
Not worried about it, and that's based on what?
I'm a licensed professional engineer.
On what?
I'm a licensed professional engineer with background in environmentalism or environmental studies, so.
Okay, so that, that's certified that the groundwater is safe?
No, I'm just expressing why I'm not concerned with it. In my professional opinion, there's not a groundwater problem.
Oh, okay.
And I believe that was also reviewed in your report that you provided, reviewed by Beta or independent reviewer.
So, um, we, we gave a general overview of how the introduction of new pesticides and other pollutants would be prevented through best housekeeping practices and other measures. Um, and as far as the existing conditions goes, um, we did do well testing on an existing irrigation well on the property, um, which found that there were not um, uh, excess pollutants as defined by the EPA. Um, the Board of Health will review that for all of our private well permits. Um, but the, the preliminary well test we did on the existing well on the property, which, you know, hasn't even been maintained in a potable state by health standards, but it's just been kind of sitting dormant for three years. We tested that well without any, any special, you know, rehab first, and that did not see any, any problematic pollutants. Uh, but the Board of Health will review that on our end. Um, and, and yeah, I think that, that speaks to the current and future water quality of the site. I would note, I believe it's Kootu Street to the west, that's all on wells. There's no, there's no public water in there.
Correct.
And those are the residential lots directly to the west of the project.
To add more boring stuff to this, water flows downhill, right? So hydraulic gradient on this site is such as the farm is uphill and the development is downhill. Pollutants don't flow uphill.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess from my point of view, I won't speak for the rest of the board, but what has been provided by the applicant and reviewed by your independent engineers and commentary from our, you know, professional planning board staff backgrounds, I'm satisfied knowing that the concerns about the environmental issues that have been brought up each meeting have been addressed in my perspective. I won't speak for anyone else, but that's how I feel.
I, I was sort of concentrating on the people buying the houses. They're using groundwater and the water's flowing down from the farm to their.
I, I guess I'll just reiterate that.
Do you see what I mean? So like if you're a small child, you could.
I understand what you're saying, and what has been provided is satisfactory to me to prove that there isn't going to be an issue, so.
And, and Board of Health will oversee uh permits for all those wells to individual lots as well, so. Board of Health is just a secondary means of uh security as well.
But that's conditional, right? Like you approve it, it's conditional?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If approved and is a condition, yes.
Anyone else?
Hi, um, Patricia Pruitt, 17 Sunset Road. This is sort of an overall question, I guess. Um, and Jay, maybe you've addressed this partially because I didn't know that that was your background. But I do worry as a resident about are we tapping into too much water utilization? And what does that look like in terms of runoff and standing water? And one of the other things that I think I heard was that at some point, the town becomes responsible for some of this new infrastructure taking care of, et cetera, with the new planning. And I don't want to lose the blueberry farm. That's it. Thank you.
Can I?
Sure.
I, I don't, nobody, we're not losing the blueberry farm. That's not happening right now unless somebody chooses to lose the blueberry farm that owns it. That's not happening. Um, Mike, do you want to comment on the rest of that question?
Sure, so as far as the, um, the town accepting the roadway, typically with subdivisions that go through the typical process, once they're completed and closed up by the planning board, then it gets recommended at town council, and the town council will vote to accept the street. That's how many of the streets were, um, become town, uh, town roads, you know, here in town. So we'd, um, we'd over, we'd take over the, um, they're proposing to get um permission to extend the sewer main from the town council, so if that happens, we'd take that over as well as the roadways and the rest of the infrastructure, the proposing wells as opposed to water mains. So the wells would remain private. And wells and septic systems go through Board of Health. Um, water mains and sewer mains go through TPW. But typically throughout the process, uh, once a subdivision is completed and gets um closed out, then the next step is for the town to take it over, uh, through an acceptance process with the town council.
Thank you, Mike. Everybody cook?
Ed Shemansky, 529 Pleasant Street. Um, I don't have a problem, you know, with, with a subdivision in town like that. What, my concern is for the blueberry farm. And I know you say we're not going to lose the blueberry farm. Lived in Franklin for 27 years. From first year we lived here, we were doing business with the blueberry farm, brought our kids there, bringing our granddaughter there now. Um, and I think there, there's some concerns. I mean, I read through all of, I read through all the reports. I read through the most recent ones. Um, and there was one issue that, that seems to still be around about the testing, because I know the test, the testing that was asked for, the, the impact of the subdivision on the blueberry farm, which is something that you can't measure right now by testing wells. It's what, what may happen. And one of the answers that was given was that the residents of the new subdivision would be expected to use chemicals responsibly. And, and a question was raised, I know, maybe by a member of the family at the time, is how can you be sure of that? I mean, we look at, people do, the materials that people have available, they're out there spraying glyphosate, killing their weeds, and they're fertilizing and calling mosquito marys and, and everybody else, that what the impact will be of, of chemicals in the ground on the, the irrigation system of the blueberry farm. And further, I think, I believe it was mentioned by the owners of the blueberry farm that they had, and sometimes had concerns with depletion of their irrigation wells. And that the addition of five private wells, what that will do. I know you can go out and you can do a flow analysis, you get 30 gallons per minute or whatever else, at one given point in time. What about, you know, in the middle of a drought in August? Um, or, or if there are other times like that? Um, and especially now concerning the fire hydrant issue, since, you know, the answer to the, to the fire department wanting a hydrant within 500 feet, um, was that, it's that goes away because we're going to private wells and we're not going to have town water. It was expected that the fire hydrant will be, I mean, that, that if there was a fire, that that would be actually the water would come from some of the private wells? The concern I would have there would be that if there ever was a fire, a house fire, and one of the houses in the subdivision, it'd be bad enough for the, for the homeowners themselves, but that may be, it may trigger a brush fire or something, and it could have a significant impact on the blueberry farm if there was a fire that was out of control, that couldn't be extinguished because there wasn't a fire hydrant down on the cul-de-sac. And I don't see in reading that that has been addressed. Um, so that's a concern. Like I said, I, it's just a concern as a, as a longtime resident, um, of what the impact, that the impact to the blueberry farm, in my feeling, hasn't really been satisfying. And then further than as, again, as a lifelong resident, or not lifelong, as a longtime resident of the town, and knowing the town's budget and staffing issues, I believe I read in here, there's a, there's an issue with the, about the stormwater system, since there's not going to be a, uh, there're going to be individual property owners, but the land itself, you know, the, the ownership of that is sort of ambiguous, and that the sto, management of the stormwater system will be turned over to the town. And whether the town, with its already limited resources and budget, can, can handle that? You know, I, I, that, that's another issue too. Um, and then I, i- is it true that the lab that did the testing is actually no longer certified? That they lost their certification because of problems with testing a couple of years ago?
I, I don't know to that. To my knowledge, you know, there was no issue there, but um, the Board of Health, at the time of the activation of our wells, will be investigating and doing their full permit process. Um, so, you know, the, the Board of Health will oversee the, the drinking water quality in testing. Um, that's all I can say to that at this time.
Sure.
So, so I understand that there are a lot of, you know, loose ends, as somebody said, right? There, because that's the way it is. There, there are engineering, you know, details that need to be firmed up. And, and, and we talk, go talk about uh, conditional approvals. I think that, that there seems that there are still some issues big enough that maybe uh, go beyond a conditional approval, that these things need to be resolved first. I think there are some significant deviations from the stormwater plan that this lot, that this subdivision has as well. And it would seem to me that those issues need to be mitigated before any approvals, right? Because there's a lot of stuff hanging there.
No, I, they'd have reviewed all the drainage calculations. Mike has reviewed it. Um, they've made all the corrections accordingly. Um, that's what Mike and, and even Beta commented on as well, so, um, that's taken care of. Um, I guess in terms of the, um, water quality, um.
I can nerd out a little bit more if you're really.
I was just going to divert it to you anyways, so.
Yeah, 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 I'm, I'm going to keep it, so this is.
Yeah.
Right. You know, that's what I'm saying, it's like water goes downhill, right? So, the aquifer over here is like a cake. There's different layers of it. Some, it's bedrock with water, bedrock without water, bedrock with, with water, bedrock without water, okay? So the bedrock without the water stops water from going between one of the two zones where the bedrock has water. And it, so this well here is at 120 feet deep. Um, so kind of a mid-depth. All of the other wells in the area are much deeper. So they're in like the 500 plus range, right? So they're actually in different aquifers. They're drawing from different sources of water. Um, so that's the source issue and then, um.
Sorry, Jay, for a minute, the, the one you said that was 120, which well is that?
That's the farm well.
The, the blueberry farm that will stay?
Correct, yeah. So that's, and then aquifer that's perched higher than all the other ones that are being used in the area according to the well database for servicing homes. used in the area according to the well database for servicing homes. So you're accessing different sources of water. So the well, the farm is up higher than the proposed development. So if any sort of chemical were to be spread, you know, anything on the development, just due to stormwater would flow downhill and away from the farm. So the last bit there is what about stuff that's going to get spread? Because people are just going to use pesticides, like you can't really stop that, they get weeds and they're driving them to spray them, right? So I nerded out on what like the aqueous phase of these different chemicals is. And basically, what is it as a liquid? Is it water? Is it denser than water? Or is it heavier than water? And the majority of pesticides are essentially, when we get them in an aqueous state, it's not, we get full-on glyphosate, glyto-phosphate, or however you pronounce that. Like we don't get the concentrated version of it, 100%. We get it all mixed up with water. So it's already in an aqueous phase. So if you were to add it to the groundwater, it would disperse into the groundwater. It wouldn't float. And the bigger concern here that I had was that it would sink. Because if it sank, that would be the problem. But according to this stuff, it's all aqueous phase, which just kind of spreads throughout the aquifer. So again, having to do my own environmental analysis of it here, I'm not hyper-concerned with potential impact for either drawdown from the wells or contamination from the pesticide.
Jake, can I ask for just a very simple clarification? So what I think I hear you saying is that pesticides that a homeowner would use, that maybe they go to Home Depot or something and buy, is in such a state that it is not concentrated enough at high quantities that would be used on a homeowner's piece of property to go into well and cause any damage downstream, upstream, whichever direction we're going to the blueberry farm?
Yeah.
The concentrations that a homeowner uses is not the, in the water system.
Correct.
In your opinion?
Yeah, I'm going through this and to use something everyone's, you're concerned about the Aaron Brockovich, where it goes down to the bottom and it falls...
And homeowners using pesticides in an added quantity, that could do that.
No, if they had that of this and kicked it over, that was 100%, then yeah, you'd have an issue, but that's not the concentration, so.
Thank you.
Sorry to nerd out too much.
All right, thank you. Mike, is that, is that clear? Obviously what Jay was saying.
That was a good example, yeah, no, I agree.
I think in response to the question about the fire hydrant, the fire chief did provide a letter, and Jen, do you mind if I, you want to read it in, or you want me to?
Yeah, I kind of told you. The letter from the fire chief says, "Thank you for the opportunity to review the aforementioned plan. Franklin Fire Department would recommend placing a hydrant in compliance with the Town of Franklin subdivision rules and regulations."
So to comment on that, so whatever our subdivision rules and regs say, if the fire department is requesting it be in compliance with that, if the subdivision rules and regs say it needs to be within 500 feet, that's what they're going to require. So the applicant is going to have to work out with the fire department that they can meet the requirements of the subdivision rules and regulations. So if there is a fire and it's not compliant with the town's subdivision regs, then there's an issue.
Okay, but that's, that's nothing, nothing is planned there, and I think it's a serious issue. And so shouldn't it be known what the requirement is as part of the town's subdivision requirements? And have that designed into the, into the engineering before construction starts?
Hold on. Mike, can you give us a heads up? The nearest hydrant was what, right at the end of the street, maybe 50 feet down the road as well?
So there is a water main on Union Street, and there are two fire hydrants close to the end of the proposed roadway. One's about 100 feet on one side and about 170 feet to the other side. So there's, within the end of where the proposed roadway is going to intersect with Union Street, there are two hydrants right there at the end. So without the water line, we won't have one at the end of the cul-de-sac, but that's going to be less than 500 feet, I believe, right around there.
Right about, yeah, the road itself is like about 500 feet, a little over, I think. And as you're saying, we're not, you know, adverse to providing the fire safety, we just need to work it out with the DPW and the fire department to finalize the form. You know, Mike has some concerns about the existing main in Union Street that he wants to work through with the chief. But we understand that the board might be under a time crunch, and that's why we suggested that we work it out as a condition of approval, given that it's purely of a technical nature at this point.
Jen has the reg.
I found the regulation, just so you know what it says, that they're going to have to design to in order to comply with this subdivision regulation. So it's 312 under utilities A1A. Public supply standards, wherever feasible, water supply shall be provided from a public water supply system. Such cases, water supply system will be considered adequate only if it is capable without booster pumps of providing each proposed fire hydrant with a minimum flow of 750 gallons per minute at 20 pounds per square inch residual pressure for single-family residential developments. In cases where finished floor elevation of a house is between an elevation of 310 and 340 feet, which I actually believe we are at here, individual booster pumps are recommended for each home. Where finished floor elevations are between 340, 390, individual booster pumps required for each home above 390 feet, public water supply is not currently available. So it spells out what water pressure is required related to the actual hydrants themselves. And so that is what they need to design to in order to be in compliance per the fire department's commentary and per our rules and regulations.
Mr. Chairman, just also maybe to close out that thought, as it's, it'll be a condition of approval, so if they can't satisfy it, then they got to come back and figure something else out. They don't get to keep going because it doesn't work.
Okay, good. Amy, just name an address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Lee Genetti, 57 Hutchinson Street. Good evening. I have a few specific comments and then some thoughts I'd like to share with the board. You know, first, I remain concerned about the number of waivers that are going on with this proposed development, particularly the categories they fall in, right? Waivers related to water, accessibility when it comes to our sidewalks, fire safety. These are just really bizarre when you're trying to build a new development and you're thinking about building a quality community. You're automatically setting the folks up that are looking to buy these to not a standard that I think the town really should be looking for. And I know the upgrades are expensive, but this is a business proposition, right? This is someone looking to make a profit. This is not a public good. It's not a public interest that's being given to the town. It is someone that is coming to you with a business proposal that cannot do it without waivers. You've talked a lot about the subdivision ordinance. The water one is pretty clear in there. And I would actually push and challenge you to think about what it means to not being feasible. Just because it's a little bit too expensive doesn't mean it's not feasible. There's a water main there. They can connect to it. They have to pay for the upgrades, right? This is not a hardship case. I'd also say that, you know, really, the lack of clarity around who's going to ultimately own that drainage lot, I think is pretty important. I think one of the previous speakers spoke about the condition of Franklin's finances, like many communities throughout the Commonwealth, and particularly as we're trying to weather the economic conditions. Why would we take that on? Why would we pass that on to the taxpayers? That's something that should go to like an HOA. If you're going to approve the project, the houses that are there should be responsible for that. But again, it's a business decision, right? It takes away from the profit and the sellability of these lots. In terms of water, I appreciate the extensive conversation that you've had tonight about it. That has been like the number one issue that we've been raising. We don't have any water, we have no irrigation, we don't have a farm. I appreciate the comments and the expertise that Member Mello has brought up, but here's another piece that would not be known. That well on the property that you were referencing, getting 30 gallons per minute, our irrigation well on our property are connected together. They both can't run at the same time. They go dry. They go down below. They are tapped in. Water alone is the biggest threat to the viability of our ability to stay in business. We've put in other wells on the property, you're going down, you're not getting what you need. So they are connected, and that has been a concern. And switching over to five other wells that perhaps may go to one of the different strata underneath that bedrock, and they might be in something else, they may tap into that same aquifer. That's a problem. And I think as we think about the long-term viability of these 500-foot length for a hose from a fire truck, might not seem a lot, that is pretty far. When you have to make a curb, that is pretty far. And I don't say that from just my own sort of like thought of what it is. I was a career firefighter for 14 years. That is something that I hope the fire department, I have faith in them, will go through, but that's not an insignificant sort of comment. I would say this, as we work through this sort of process, I really appreciate the role that all of you have. I know how hard it is. I mean, this is a very difficult sort of role to sit in because the process is inherently set up to have winners and to have losers. And what you need to do is have a fair and transparent process. We have rules related to subdivisions. We have rules related to all sorts of things that you need to consider. Your master plans, we have housing goals, we have...
Excuse me, sir.
Yes?
I would like to ask if you could not lecture us on what we have the right to do. So if you want to finish up your comments...
I'm happy to.
We've got lots of emails from you as well with the same comments. So if you would like to conclude with what you have to finalize, that would be great.
Sure, I'm happy to. I would say my final thoughts are you should evaluate this proposal on whether or not it meets the requirements of the subdivisions at its face value, not with waivers. If they can do it as of right, that is fine. You've not heard a single...
I want to point out a couple of things that I need to correct you on.
Certainly.
The waivers that they're asking for on the water are not impacting the water quality or any of our drainage reports or anything to that effect. They're asking for a waiver of the pipe type and the flared end. That has nothing to do with the drainage. It's very simple. And as far as a sidewalk concerned, installing one sidewalk is a very common practice. It actually reduces impervious coverage, impervious coverage and gives you less drain, better drainage, right?
And it's less infrastructure we have to pay for in the future. We have to maintain that thing, and concrete is like $110 a yard right now.
The other waiver that's being requested is simply to allow the center lines to be 11 feet, where 200 feet is... These are all very, very minor waivers. They're not anything unusual. Any other subdivision we've had come before us has asked for waivers, and actually they make the project better. So if you want a subdivision that, you know, maybe is worse, we can ask them to meet these waivers, that's fine, we can do that for you. We, as a board, I think, take pride in knowing that we're reviewing a plan based on the merits of our subdivision rules or our site rules and regulations to say, and kind of imply that we're not insensitive. So I would just ask again, if you can conclude what you're saying so we can move on and finish up this project.
I appreciate it, and in no way was I trying to imply that you don't know your job or that you're doing something to the contrary. So that's not how I operate. So I do appreciate it, and that was not, well, it was the impact that I had, it was not the intent that I had to you. So I do apologize for that. And I would say the vote you take will directly impact the future viability of us to be able to have our farm. I think we have a right to be able to farm, and you should also know the votes that you take will impact that future piece. That is something you should have going forward, whether it's my...
What about you're going to proceed farming is going to be taken away from you. Tomorrow will you be able to go out and farm your blueberries?
Tomorrow we will be, but as we look at the conflicts that will be set up with the subdivision that's set up next door, as we look at the risks that we have to our water, those are real threats to our business. Those are threats not only to my dad, but to the future generation of my sister and her spouse, to me and my spouses, we look to do it.
So that impact isn't done to you. And we reviewed, independent reviewer, we reviewed your reports, we reviewed as town staff, as professionals, and all that documentation has said you will be able to continue to farm without impacts.
I don't know, well, I appreciate that. I don't know if that's what it said, and you've not had an agricultural expert actually look at it. Well, you have had the environmental repack, but I do appreciate your time. I appreciate you letting me try to express my views and the thoughts on this process, and thank you.
Thank you. Jay?
Unless you want to mark 10 to 5K on water tomorrow.
Amy, Mike, Jim?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just want to hand you what Mr. Knetup had given me with the list of waivers on here, so if you have it in front of you.
I have the waiver set around the cover of the sheet, the same ones?
I believe so, but...
There's a few more that were discussed tonight. I think they're all...
Everybody spoke? Make a motion.
I'm trying to read this one.
Okay. That's what the... Make a motion to close the public hearing for 543 Union Street, Aiden Estates. They're here, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to vote on the following waivers. Section 313, other improvements, a sidewalk, to install one sidewalk where two sidewalks are required. Two, section 311 B2A, stormwater management, construction piping, to allow class V piping with less than 42 inches of cover where class III pipe with 42 of cover is required. Three, section 311B2, stormwater management construction, to allow a flared end at the discharge point where a type B winged head wall is required. Four, section 301085B, streets, location and alignment to allow percent, center lines to be 11 feet apart where 200 feet is required. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, there's a list of special conditions that's being suggested. May I read those?
Sure.
God, let me just get organized here. But the condition of approval requiring the issue of the fire hydrant being resolved to satisfaction of DPW and Franklin Fire Department prior to the start of construction. And I'll reference the letter from the fire dated 10/30/25, indicating that the Franklin Fire Department would recommend placing a hydrant in compliance with the Town of Franklin subdivision rules and regulations. Then, let's see, condition two, special condition, street light, that a standard street light per subdivision regs meets the standards for DPW rather than a decorative light. Let's see. That beta review, revised stormwater report and resolve any issues to the satisfaction of beta DPW and DPCD, although it appears that all those issues have been resolved. So the condition would be any beta comments in their letter dated October 29th, 2025. And there is that the Board of Health will be involved in the part of the well permit application process and all testing and requirements required by the Board of Health. Yep, that was it.
All in favor?
We'll make a motion to approve the subdivision Aiden Estates with the recommended special conditions of approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
We got to do a roll call?
Roll call, vote Greg Ronda.
Yes.
Beth Worley.
Yes.
Jay Mello.
Yes.
Chris Dikney.
Yes.
Jen Williams, no. And for the reason that I believe that it is feasible to connect to the town water supply and the applicant is choosing not to spend more money to do so. So yes, that's a hardship, but it does not mean it's not feasible. And also, I don't believe that the environmental analysis, which is required, truly hit on the material effects upon important wildlife habitats, outstanding botanical features, and scenic or historic environs as spelled out in our subdivision rules and regulations. So four to one, still passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure to work everything out with DPW.
Absolutely.
Bye for sure.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And one last item of business, and this would be for, excuse me, 860, 862 West Central Street. This is for Glenn Farmer. It's a special permit, site plan adaptation. One last item of business, and this would be for, excuse me, 860, 862 West Central Street. This is for Glenn Farmer. It's a special permit, site plan adaptation, and I believe they're looking to be continued again, Amy?
November 17.
November 17. So, make a motion to continue 860 to 862 till November 17. Very second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we adjourn, I'd just like to say a couple of things. Best of wishes to Beth and Jen. Put a lot of time and effort over the last four years into the board and to the volunteering to the town. Very professional to deal with, wealth of knowledge. I think this board has one of the best, well-rounded professionalism that you can find in surrounding towns, based on all our professions. Beth being our previous town planner, Jen being an architect. I think we all picked and choose our battles and, you know, some things we agreed upon, some things we didn't, but I think for all intents purposes, we're probably one of the best well-rounded boards you can find. It'll be a great loss, but we're gonna have two new, one gentleman sitting in front of us, gonna be approaching.
One in the audience?
In the audience, yep. I just want to thank you for all your time and effort. It's, you know, it just goes to show that, you know, you do look out for the best half of the town and what goes on with it, so I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
I also, I want to say that it's been an awesome five-plus years. Tried to generally make decisions with the best information that I had, but really in the best interests of residents who voted me onto this board four years ago. For me, this is, this really is bittersweet. I, it is strictly a matter of Monday nights don't work for me anymore. I'm a mom of three young kids, and I'm on a leadership team at work that all have conflicts on Monday nights. And at the end of the day, I have to be there for my kids first and foremost, but I have really enjoyed, at least I have, you know, skillset to offer and really trying to do my best for the town and helping to shape it, whether it's through the board or through the master plan committee. And I consider this not goodbye, but until next time, because I will be back on the planning board someday. I think in the meantime, I'll try to find other ways to volunteer for a town board or committee that better aligns with my schedule. But I know that you're in great hands with, you know, Greg, Chris, Jay, Mark, and then Eric to come online and look forward to seeing you all in the next four years. Plus, I probably won't watch, but I'll, you know, I'll get tabs, make sure that, you know, you're staying in line. So, thank you. Thank you to Amy, Mike, and everybody to help make us look good and be there for us and everything that you do for us. I mean, it's been, I really appreciate the opportunity, the good and the bad, mostly good. But the town's lucky to have all of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Just Jen, can I read a little more? And I'm just gonna read a little quote that kind of sums it up for me. "You can please some of the people some of the time. You can please all the people some of the time, but you can't please all the people all of the time." And I think with that statement, for me, it really just, especially tonight, you try your best to do the rules, the regs. You follow everything. You're trying to take out your own personal feelings. And I really hope that the incoming folks on planning board, town council, Board of Health are giving and cutting a little bit more slack on the time that they're given and that people just, just know we're trying to do our best and, and stop, stop, just stop. Be a little nicer. Just be a little nicer.
Yeah.
But with that being said, Amy, Mike, Steve, Matt, Greg, and Beta, all our reviewers throughout the years that I've been here for four years, Chris, Franklin Cable Access, woo-hoo, Jen, Jay, Chris, Mark, and Greg, you guys really have been a pleasure to work with. I love everyone's perspectives on everything. You're also smart. Sometimes Jay, I don't understand him. I appreciate what you say because I know it's smart, so, and I know what you're talking about. But I think everybody on this board has a really great perspective, diverse knowledge, where I might not know something, Jen, you know. Or Greg, you can tell me something about construction that I don't know, but, but everybody on this board has their own unique qualifications, which has really made it great. And I just appreciate it. And when I ran with you, Jen, four years ago, it was fun.
That was fun. That was wild.
And, you know, who would have saw it four years later? I'm almost 50 years old now, which is hard to believe, but put a lot of time and energy into this town. And when I started, I had just turned barely 30. So, 20 years later, sitting here is, is just surreal to me to know that I did it and I made it, and you guys made it possible to be here and enjoy it. So, I just wanted to say thanks. And to the residents, too? Thank you. That's why we're all here, right? Because we care. And I just hope people remember, we really do care. So, thanks.
Well, well said.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to both of you. You guys have been wonderful to work with. Congratulations on the election, on being here for four years and making it the four years. It's not always easy to do. You'll be highly missed. In general, this whole board has been great to work with. You guys all work great together. Definitely are giving unbiased, watching out for the residents as well as, you know, everyone in town, and I really will miss you guys, gals, and appreciate all of the time that you guys did stay here for the years and gave a lot of good input, made a lot of good decisions, put up with a lot of good and bad. So, I wish you both well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck to everybody running.
Yep.
Yeah. Even to those that have no competition.
Mark and Eric will know and will come and help. But thank you once again for all your hard work and your time. That's, you know, it's four years of your life that you gave up, so look at it that way.
We can give it up.
Well, we're gonna change our meetings to Tuesday, so now... So, we all smarted that one.
You try to change something, it's time to work.
Anybody else have any other comments? If not, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?